Meeting to order, it is seven fifteen P M on November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two. And this is the Board of Selectmen meeting. Can I please have everybody stand for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This is a technically it's called tax classification hearing. We're having the tax classification hearing for tonight. And on the agenda, I got a little paragraph I need to read. Still warrant, select board will conduct the tax classification hearing on Monday, November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two at seven fifteen P M in the Shepherd Menaceville Building, forty-eight High Street. At the hearing, the select board will consider tax policy options, including, one, whether to have a single or split tax rate, and two, whether to offer an open space discount, a residential exemption, and a small commercial exemption. So that is what we have on the agenda. Kathy?
Yes.
So this is kind of your thing, you brought this to us. Did you want to give us any background?
Well, I'm kind of thrown into this, so.
Are you prepared?
Um, yeah, I mean, if, if, you know, if you want, you want to start it off, Kathy, and I can.
Okay, I just don't know where to start.
Uh, okay, I mean, to.
We'll just go to.
We'll, we do, I mean, we can start, we can start with the presentation. So it's a couple of different slides from the, um, from the Board of Assessors. You know, Kathy is a member, she's with us tonight. Just goes over the total budget, twelve million, nine hundred forty-four thousand, hundred and nine dollars and eighty-five cents. We'll start off on that page.
Yes.
Okay. So you have the estimated receipts and revenue sources of four million, five hundred thousand, twenty-five thousand, uh, four hundred seventy-six and thirteen cents. So the necessary tax levy for fiscal year twenty-three would be eight million, four hundred eighteen thousand, six hundred thirty-three dollars and seventy-two cents.
Yes, that's correct.
So that's what's needed to, to, to raise. You know, in comparison to last year, the amount that was needed to be raised was, uh, was seven million, seven million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred fifty dollars and eighty-eight cents. So you'll see an increase of approximately one point two million dollars, uh, as compared from fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-three of what needs to be raised and appropriated. The levy limit, uh, for fiscal year twenty-two, eight million, nine hundred seventy-nine thousand, four hundred twenty-three, two and a half percent. And you have new growth of fifty-three thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars. So it's a modest year of new growth.
Yes.
Uh, last year was a little bit more because there was some more solar, is, is that my understanding?
Um, I'm not real sure, either silver or new homes.
New homes, yeah. Tax levy limit, nine point two million dollars, debt exclusion, the maximum allowable levy, nine point two million, nine, nine million, two hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars. The board will be considering tonight either a single or a split, uh, tax rate, a vote is required. The board will also be considering either an open space discount, a vote would be required for that. Residential exemption, a vote would be required for that. Small commercial exemption, a vote would be required for that. I believe the Board of Assessors, uh, have signaled that option one A is what they're proposing.
That is correct.
So the Board of Assessors is looking at, at a tax rate of fifteen dollars and eighty cents, for fiscal year twenty-three. And that's based on the total evaluation, of, uh, five hundred thirty-two million, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars, uh, seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars.
So that actually keeps us in the middle between two thousand twenty-one, where we had fifteen ninety-six, and two thousand twenty-two, where we had fifteen fifty-six. So it puts us in the middle between that. And it's still much lower, the last time we had a lower tax rate was back in two thousand eleven. Ever since two thousand twelve, it went up to sixteen twenty-three, two thousand thirteen, seventeen ninety-four. Two thousand fourteen, it went up to nineteen, um, well, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fourteen, it went to nineteen ten. Two thousand sixteen, nineteen eighty-four. And it just continued. The past few years, it's, it's actually lowered down to a.
So, Mr. Chairman, as, and members of the board, as, as everybody may be well aware, the tax rate is, 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 is a contributing factor to what the taxes will be. Uh, another strong contributing factor is the amount of, um, of money that's needed to be raised, uh, and also, uh, the amount of growth, new growth. So, uh, in terms of what the evaluations are, if evaluations are on the rise, uh, then that is also a contributing factor as to, um, you know, the, the, the overall tax bill.
Right. We, we want the tax rate to go down, but the home values to go up, and that's the way it's been going. And if people are paying more in taxes, it's because your house is worth more. You know, it's a value, it's valued as more. The tax rate has kind of gone down since, especially since after two thousand eleven, where it just kept on climbing up higher and higher. Do you have anything else? Do you have anything else?
No, no, we vote for a single rate, so we won't hurt the commercial people, in town commercial businesses.
And typically, we've always voted for the single rate. We don't want to push out commercial business.
No.
Did you have anything?
What is the minimum residential factor, M R F, what does that mean?
What page is that?
So it's on page two, it's also on page three.
So that's the factor as to, as to how, how you're going to, uh, do with regards to, um, the evaluations and the values.
It's the calculation they use?
Correct.
Do you have anything else?
No, I don't think so.
Did you have any questions yet?
No, sir.
Beverly Solches from Warren, I mean, usually, I, I mean, I have from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-two, the valuation and the tax rate. Usually, when the tax rate goes up, the valuation comes down. So now, personally, our valuation went up seventy-five thousand, nine hundred. Our tax rate at seventeen dollars and eighty cents, when, we're going to be paying six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars in taxes. That's up a hundred, a thousand, twenty.
How much you paying for taxes?
Six thousand, we will be paying six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars.
No, you said you paid seventeen something? For a tax rate?
No, I'm saying, in the past, from twenty seven, twenty fifteen to present, when the tax rate goes up, the valuation usually comes down. Now, you're increasing the tax rate and the valuation. So that's a twenty-one percent increase.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's, it's based on market conditions, uh, you know, it's unfortunate that, uh, you know, that both are going up at the same time, at the same rate. But, you know, based on market conditions, the values are, of people's homes are relatively up right now. Um, and so coupled with, uh, the, uh, the, the, the small increase in the, in the rate, um, and the additional spending, uh, it has to adjust for that.
So we don't, we don't control the market rate, we don't control how much your house is worth. You know, that's, that's the market. The market dictates, okay, there's more of a need for your house, so it's more valuable. We don't, we don't determine that. All we do is look at the tax rate. And we try to keep it as low, and we've been trying to keep it low, while maintaining services throughout the town. Everything's going up, fuel's going up, heating oil, um,
As long as people.
Insurance. You know, there, there's a lot going, going on, and it, it, let's see, we're going up twenty-four cents?
Twenty-four cents.
We're going up twenty-four cents.
What's the percentage?
Point seven five. Point seven five.
Point seven five on the rate, yeah.
But it goes by what's voted in at the town, the town meetings? That's what makes the, I don't know.
So obviously, you know, at, at town meeting, it, it was, you know, it was talked about that there was a, a need for additional spending, okay, to, to secure services. And, you know, it was estimated at town meeting that, you know, there could be an increase anywhere between five to eight hundred dollars. That was, I, I said that on the town floor.
You know, it's, it's a hard time for everybody, we're paying this too. And try to keep it as low as we can while maintaining the services in the community we can. And unfortunately, everything is going up. It's not getting any cheaper, nothing is going down. Our fuel prices, uh, it costs a lot to fuel up a fire truck and keep it running to, to go to somebody's house fire. It costs a lot to, to fuel up an ambulance, cru- cruisers, to put heating oil in, you know, in the buildings. It, it costs a lot of money to do all this stuff. And I wish the fuel prices dropped, amongst other things, shipping costs, just general maintenance. Everybody charges more now to get things fixed, because it costs them more money. It costs them more, more money to buy parts, it costs them more money to get here, um, and provide their services. It, it's, it's unfortunate. I think twenty-four cents is pretty modest.
Well, it's modest, but when your valuation goes up seventy-five thousand, nine hundred.
But we don't control that at all. You know, we don't control how much your houses were. And I personally'd rather my house be worth more money, so if I do sell my house, I can get a better price for it.
Yeah, but the bank doesn't go.
Okay, the tax.
The bank doesn't go by what the town's valuation is.
No.
No, they don't.
Indirectly, I mean.
They, 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 yeah.
It's based on market conditions.
Right. So.
I mean, my house could be worth a million dollars, but the banks are going to.
I wouldn't want to pay you a tax rate if it was worth a million dollars.
Well, there's a lot of people on social security, I mean.
Absolutely.
This is, this is a killer.
And, and we've gone down, you know, this, we've gone down in the past three years. You know, you haven't seen these tax rates since two thousand eleven.
Two thousand, oh, wow, I don't go back that far.
Two thousand eleven, it was fifteen thirty-two. And then two thousand twelve, it went to sixteen twenty-three, we're below that.
The valuation.
It went up a dollar.
The evaluation went up a dollar?
No, I, I don't know the, I don't know the valuations back then, but I'm just saying, again, if I want to put my money somewhere, I want to put it in the value of my home.
Well, in two thousand sixteen, the, let's see, the tax rate was nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents, but our evaluation was two hundred and eighty-five thousand. So in the past, like I said before, usually, the evaluation goes down if the tax rate goes up.
We don't control how much your houses were, and what the market tells you were. We, we have no control of that, you know, as, as we said, it's the market. Your house, your house is just worth more money.
I hope so.
So. Anything else about?
Yeah.
All right, do you guys have any other questions?
I don't think so.
I just want to, um, show an example of how to take advantage of, you know, your house going higher. Let's say, uh, ten years ago, I, I bought my house for one hundred thousand dollars, and I've been paying my mortgage all these years, and let's say I still own seventy-five. But today, that house is doubled. So if you do a refinance and buy the new price, or a new evolution of your house, you may get a hundred and seventy-five. You pay the seven, you, you know, you still have like a big chunk of money there to, to do something extra, so it's.
The equity within your home.
Yeah, the equity.
You have equity.
The, the equity just, it just shoot up and, on, to the, to the roof. People should take advantage of that.
All right, so each year, we typically have voted for a single rate, okay? Which would be the assessors' option one A, which is the single rate. That's across the board, you know, for commercial, residential, for everybody, we pay the single one rate. The reason for that is we don't have a lot of commercial within the community, and raising a higher commercial rate within our community would make it very difficult for the commercial that we do have here to sustain, and it could potentially force them out to other communities. So that's why we've always done that. If you guys, with the commercial rate, you know, we'd have it broken up, but again, we also don't have a whole lot of commercial within our community right now, to make that even be sensible. Right? Do you guys have any questions about that?
No, it's, it's, it's very clear. I'm trying to understand and learn at the same time. If we don't agree with assessors, for example, and we go for a split, what would be the situation? I know you just said, oh, we may lose more businesses in town, and of course, we don't want that.
No.
Well, that's the rate, on page three, that's what the rate would look like, fourteen forty and twenty-three seven.
Commercial rate would be much higher than the residential rate.
Yeah.
On the other hand, having, voting for a sing, for a single, it actually, it promotes new businesses in town as well, because they see us as a community where we try to support businesses.
Yeah.
You know, I, you know, I dislike that we're kind of like in the middle of nowhere, we don't have a McDonald's, we don't have something like that, you know? So it's, it doesn't make any sense to, to do a split tax rate for me, because I really want Warren to become a little bit more commercial.
Jim, what's, um, what are communities that, like, did Springfield do a split rate?
Springfield has a split rate, yeah.
And is it similar to this? I mean, this is just a small discount on the residential, but the businesses kind of get whacked on this.
Yeah, it's usually, usually the same, you know?
It's similar.
The last time I was there, it was, you know, the residential rate, uh, rate was somewhere around twenty, and then the commercial rate was somewhere around like thirty-eight. So, you know, it was significantly more.
Yeah.
There's also a significant amount of commercial space within it, it's competitive.
Right.
Also, you, you, you.
People are willing to pay that, to be there.
Yeah, they want to.
Yeah, you put a, you, they know that if they put a, a business over there, they only have a hundred people coming in every day. So there's business.
Yeah.
But here, we, we don't have that hundred people coming every day, so it's, it's harder for.
We, we do that, then they're just going to move to Palmer. Where, Brookfield, you know, they're going to move their business somewhere else. And it just, it hurts us to do that.
Or decide to go somewhere else.
Or they go somewhere else, yeah. Then we lose the jobs, and we lose what little bit we get from a, a tax revenue from that business. And we have an empty building, so. And that's not what we want. We want our buildings filled up, we want to be productive. You guys want to talk anymore about it?
I'm good with, uh, single rate.
Do we have any questions about the rate? Anybody from the public? Anybody from Zoom? Is there anybody on Zoom?
Yeah.
Let's carry.
Carry an iPhone.
iPhone. No comments?
Nothing.
Okay. So, if you want to do a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the, um, single rate of fifteen dollars and eighty cents.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next thing we got to do is the open space discount. Uh, there is no land classified as open space in the town of Warren currently, correct? Okay, so we don't even have that classification. So do we still have to do a formal vote, or should we?
Yeah, I would, I would just say that there's no, there's no, there's no, uh, land classified as open space in, in the town of Warren, and, uh, no vote, it wouldn't, wouldn't be required, uh, vote wouldn't be required.
Right.
So we don't need to vote on it. We're good. So option two, there's no vote required. And option three, residential exemption. So adopting the residential exempt exemption shifts the tax burden within the residential class from lower valued properties to higher valued properties. The amount of the tax levy paid by the class remains the same. The exemption may not exceed twenty percent of the average value of all class. One residential property's values may not be reduced by more than ten percent of the full and fair cash values. And typically used in cities for large apartment buildings, things like that.
Or expensive second homes.
Yeah. And did you make a recommendation, did you guys have a recommendation on that one?
No, we did not.
Okay, typically, we vote no on that one.
Typically.
Because we don't have that type of
No.
property to be able to warrant that also.
Right, they have a lot of.
Okay. So do you guys want to discuss that at all, or are you good?
Yeah, I don't think it's a good idea, so.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Did you have anything to say?
No.
Do you want to do a motion?
What's the motion to?
Option three, resident, residential exemption, we have.
To not adopt.
To not adopt it.
So I'll make a motion to not adopt, well, you wanted, okay, to not adopt, adopt option three, residential exemption.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Option four, small commercial exemption. Adopting the small commercial exemption shifts the tax burden within the class. The amount of the levy remains the same, owners of commercial property valued less than, uh, one million and occupied by a small business with fewer than ten employees may be granted an exemption of no more than that ten percent of the assessed value of the property. Eligible businesses are those that have been classified by Mass Department of Workforce Development, who provide a list of businesses to the assessors annually. So this will result in a higher tax rate for all commercial and industrial properties. Uh, the amount of the levy remains the same, small and, uh, owner of small businesses would pay lower rates, and shifts the remainder of the levy share to larger commercial businesses, doing exactly what we don't want to do again.
Correct.
Because we don't want to force businesses out by shifting the burden onto others when we don't have a lot of it in the first place.
Yeah, I'd like, to vote on this, I'd like to see data. I wouldn't vote on this as it is, you know what I mean? Like, I'd like to see who, how many businesses are under a million dollars that would benefit from this.
That's a good point.
And how many are over that would not benefit from it.
Okay.
But if, if you guys don't want to, it's fine.
Typically, we have not adopted this because, again, we don't have that really. And it's doing exactly what we tried not to do by voting for option one A.
Right.
With the single rate, because then we're shifting the burden onto larger businesses, causing the problem again.
Yeah.
So we're raising their rate, uh, by default.
I mean, the other potential bad thing is, is next year, if we adopt this now, and next year, we decide not to adopt that, then those small companies, their tax rate is going to bleep, because we would have given them a discount in twenty-three and then taken it away in twenty-four, if we didn't vote this in again.
Right.
So it's probably.
The status quo is kind of what was.
Yeah, leave it.
Because, again, we don't have a lot of it here to be able to do that. We're not a Springfield, or Boston, or Worcester. We don't have that kind of, um, commercial development here. Do you have anything else? Did you have any questions?
Is, is it, just going back to what Rich said, how many business we have that, if they're less than a million dollars and have less than ten people in town?
Not many.
I mean, it would be all the restaurants, right?
Yeah, we, everything, we don't have many high paying ones, so.
Yeah.
How many are?
Mostly all small.
Above this limits?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's probably the easier question, right? Probably, uh, Cirque.
Also, also, we're just talking about no more than ten percent discount, so it's, it's not like a deal breaker here.
Yeah.
It's just, we're talking about little things, but, you know. Do you know how many are above?
Probably have.
No, I don't. I could guess.
Coparts.
Coparts, Cirque.
Yeah, Cirque.
Water pumps?
Yeah, that's Cirque.
Lizaq.
Yeah, maybe Stacy's.
Yeah, you don't want to hurt buses, because of that.
Then we're paying.
Flips back over onto our budget, because they're just going to charge us for it, so.
Yeah, so if there's only, yeah, there's just a couple of them. I mean, I could vote.
You know, we've never adopted it, um, purely due to the fact we just don't have the commercial here. And just like Rich is saying, if we did it this year, and then next year, we voted no, that would hurt the small businesses, because then they would be accustomed to that little bit that they were saving. Now they get, all of a sudden, they bounced way up again. So you guys want to talk anymore, or are you good?
No, I'm, I'm good.
I'm good.
Anybody else have any questions? Anybody from Jim?
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion to not adopt the, uh, option number four, the small commercial exemption.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. David Dufrain, aye, the motion, motion passes unanimously. And that's all you needed from us, correct?
That's it, we got to sign something.
There's a signature page, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure Deanna must have sent it here.
Do you have the official one?
Sign, sign.
Is it just?
All of you sign on the line.
Just the first line?
Mm-hmm.
What? Do you care?
He's squawking at your foot, man.
I know he is. See, now I can't even see my signature, it doesn't stand out.
You always stand out, sir. We're signing all on the same line, Rich?
All on the same line.
Okay.
Yep.
So.
Do you, do you want to take it, do you want to?
Well, I was going to make a call.
We're going to adjourn from our.
Yeah.
Our tax hearing, click tax classification hearing, and then we'll go immediately into the select bins meeting.
So are we closing?
Closing the public hearing.
Yeah, closing it.
So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the tax rate.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye, the motion passes unanimously, the tax classification hearing is officially closed.